Good evening and welcome to tonight's candidate forum for Antioch City Council District Two. My name is Liz Fuller, Library Services Manager for the Contra Costa County Library. Tonight's event is a partnership with several organizations. The League of Women Voters of Diablo Valley, the County Elections Department, and CCTV. We're streaming live on Facebook and video coverage will be available online after the program on the Library and County Elections Department websites, as well as the League's Voters Edge website. Please join me in welcoming our moderator for this evening, Gail Saxton, from the League of Women Voters. Gail is a former Labor and Employee Relations Executive who retired after four years of overseeing contract negotiations and administration for three top U.S. universities. Thank you so much, Gail, and over to you.
Thank you. Welcome from the League of Women Voters of Diablo Valley. I am your moderator. The timers today are Peggy Houston and Marielle Worts. I'd like to welcome you to this forum, which is held to inform about the candidates running for Antioch City Council District Two. Candidates participating in today's forum are Barbannica and Tony Tiscariano. Today's purpose is voter education. The League is a nonpartisan organization, meaning that we never take positions on candidates or political parties. However, we do take positions on issues. As a moderator, I neither live nor vote in this area. This session will follow a standard League format in order to best provide the fairness of a level playing field. Before the session began, the names of each selected, the opening speaker, which will be Mike, and the closing statements will begin with Tony. Each candidate will have the opportunity to make an opening statement of two minutes, answer each question asked one minute, and make closing remarks, two minutes. After opening statements, we will proceed to questions and answers segment of the program, in which I will ask the candidates questions submitted by the audience. Each candidate will have the opportunity to answer each question. Personal attacks are not permitted. Statements made about other candidates must be in the public record. And if one candidate references the other candidate, she or he will have an opportunity to respond. Now for opening statements. Mike, can you go first, please?
Sure. Thank you very much for having me this evening, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for actually putting this forum on. We very much appreciate being able to get our message out. My name is Mike Barbannica. I'm a longtime resident of the city of Antioch. I moved to the city in 1970 and have lived multiple places throughout the city. I've raised my kids here. I have a business that I've opened here. My children are here. My grandkids are here. So I'm very much a part of the city of Antioch, as is my family. I spent my career working in law enforcement prior to retiring, and retired as a lieutenant with the Pittsburgh Police Department. During my tenure at the police department, I was able to work almost every assignment in the department, including patrol, investigations. I actually rotated through K-9 Motors, worked street-level crimes or street-level narcotics. So I'm very familiar with what goes on on the street, the issues that are on the street. In addition to that, I promoted through the ranks from corporal to, from officer to corporal to sergeant, and then ultimately retired as a lieutenant, and ran a bureau as bureau commander, running code enforcement in various, various aspects of the police department. So I'm very familiar with those issues. When I drive around our city now, and I see what the city has become and the issues that we're dealing with in this city, I'm disappointed. And I think change needs to occur. We need to get Antioch back on track. It doesn't, you don't have to drive far within the community to find the disappointment that we all see every day. And my goal is, as a resident in the city of Antioch, is to work with the other council members to start getting Antioch back on track. Thank you.
Tony?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, good evening, and thank you very much for having the forum this evening. I'm a 50-year resident of Antioch. I'm a former council member and a retired steel worker. I've also had the opportunity to serve with the Antioch Unified School District as a Personnel Commissioner, which I'm currently doing at this point. Yeah, this is something that I have really been, you know, advocating as far as, you know, bringing more growth to our district and the city of Antioch. When I came to city council in 2012, we were facing a lot of devastation. We were on the verge of bankruptcy. Our police force was down to its minimum, no code enforcement, and we were struggling. And we were looking at the city of Vallejo and the city of Stockton, where they were filing for bankruptcy, and we were on the verge of doing the same thing. But we worked diligently to, to bring back our city. And through the years, we were able to bring back our force to a reasonable capacity of police officers of 117 now to date, code enforcement. The city council has approved to bring in some SROs to the high schools. So things are starting to move along a little bit. But in our district in particular, there is a lot of devastation out there as far as blighted homeless, and we need to make sure that we have the expertise and the wherewithal to make sure that we can actually get, get the work done. I have that expertise and wherewithal because I've done it in the past. I have the resources and the folks that I have worked for in the past to actually get a lot of the work done. So again, you know, I'm looking forward to, you know, running this campaign. Mike is a very credible candidate, but I have experience, six years in city council, and I think there's a lot more work to be done. So, thank you.
Thank you. The first question goes to you, Tony. What makes you uniquely qualified to serve as council member for the city of Antioch?
Again, as I said, I've served in the past. I was elected to city council in 2000, well, actually appointed to city council in 2012, elected in 2014, and served to 2018. And during those times, we were working diligently to bring up our finances. We're working diligently to improve our police many levels. We were working diligently to bring back our furloughed workers, which we were able to do so. So in that time span, we brought our city back from a verge of bankruptcy to viability, and I need to continue to work on that. I'm one of those that's open-minded, have the ability to work with others, whether we have different philosophies or not, but I have the ability to work with anybody in the council, and I also take leadership positions in that respect, too, and I am well-respected when it comes to that point.
Okay. Thank you. Mike, same question. What makes you uniquely qualified to serve as council member for the city of Antioch?
So I, too, have the experience, and I applaud anybody who has, has served in, for, for the community. I applaud anybody in that situation. But I have 21 years of experience in working with communities. Years ago, there was a project that needed to be started up when I was a sergeant. And the project not only involved the local police department, but it also involved bringing in state agencies, other local agencies. And I was able to actually put together a team within the department, working with allied agencies, and bringing regional support in, where within about an 18-month period, we assisted in lowering the crime rate, our team assisted in lowering the crime rate, 23.87 percent. I have that experience. I have those years behind me, where I know how to get that job done and work with allied agencies on a regional approach.
Okay. Thank you. Mike, this question continues with you. What issues made you run for city council?
Well, driving around, as I stated, driving around the city and seeing the condition just nearby our homes, Tony and I live in the same district, and, and we see the same issues. So about two, three years ago, I had no intention on running for council. I started going to, just as a private citizen, into these areas and shooting videos and approaching the council members, the city manager, and asking for help from code enforcement, from the police department, and started working with those areas within the city to help start cleaning them up. As this evolved and started to grow, community organizations within the city and private citizens had come to me and asked me to continue with this mission and actually run for city council and try to make an actual difference within the city from a formal perspective.
Okay, thank you. Tony, what issues made you run for this office?
Well, again, because we did enter into a district, city as districts now, I always felt that, prior to even becoming a district city, that the west side of Antioch, which the district that Mike and I currently live in, was always neglected. You saw the evaluation and depreciation of the, of the, of the commercial buildings out there, the vacancy, the blackness out there, and it, you know, it really concerned me. My biggest fear was there isn't a current incumbent in, in the city council that represents the west side of, of this city. And so somebody needed to step up. I had the experience. I had the wherewithal. I was a council member in the past. I have, in the past, worked with the, the owners of the majority of the vacant buildings out there to try to do something positive and active out there. And so I wanted to make sure that somebody that represented the district that had somewhat of experience. Now, if somebody that's had a lot of, you know, gained experience from, from the past, decided to run, I may, may have stepped down because I felt that six years on the council was sufficient. But there isn't anybody here that I feel that has experience to do the job that we need to get done to revitalize the, particularly the Somerville-Delta Fair corridor, which is a big focus of my, my campaign.
Okay, thank you. Continuing with you, Tony, a new question. Are you satisfied with the current status of police resident relations? If yes, why? If not, what would you do to improve it?
Well, I think the Antioch police is doing a great job as far as communicating with our community. With that said, though, with, with the issues occurring throughout the nation, I think it's important that our, our, our police force, you know, works even more diligently with, with our, with our community. I see on social media that they, they are transparent, but we wanted to make sure that they're able to continue that transparency, to be more vocal about our community needs. One of the things that I advocated back in 2014, when we were trying to bring in some resources for our police department, was to supply them with body cams. Felt little resistance with the, with the, with the police union at the time, but now I think it's more important that the transparency part of this would really work if you had a body cam and a police officer to be more efficient and being able to do their, their work. So, yeah, for the most part, I am a supporter of the police department. I have had an endorsement in the past. I'll continue to be supportive, and it tells me here to stop, so I will.
Okay, thank you. Mike, same question. Are you satisfied with the current status of police resident relations? If yes, why? If not, what would you do to improve it?
I think we have a fantastic police department in the city of Antioch, and I think the chief is doing an outstanding job. That being said, transparency within a police department, within any police department, is a must for the community. And let me give you an example. Back in 1989, I brought cassette recorders, back then we didn't have body cams. I brought cassette recorders into our patrol team, and we started using those on stops and saw how effective they were. Because the truth came out, whether what the officer did, what anybody they were interacting with did. And so I took this a step further. Before I announced my candidacy, I actually went to the Police Officers Association, and I said, going to be very straight with you, I'm going to advocate for body cams. Are you okay with that? They were okay with that, and they welcomed that. And then I went to the police chief and did the same thing. I told him, I will be pushing for body cams for transparency. He supports it, and so do I.
Thank you. Mike, you get first shot at the next question.
Okay.
Do you think affordable housing should be a council priority? If so, what would be your approach?
So Tony and I are both in the housing industry. We're both retired, and we're both in the housing industry. So we do deal with this quite often. And there is a need for housing, but my stance, recently when I was interviewed by the Mercury News, one of the things that I told them was, yes, I understand the need for affordable housing. I do. But what my priority is, is to get the areas under control within the city, where we can clean the city up, get rid of the garbage on the street, and make every attempt to bring business back into this community. Our ratio for housing versus business is very lopsided. We need to bring business in. We have business leaving on a regular basis. In our district, we have a business right now that's been here for 15, 20 years. They're slated to move out next month. And it's just, it saddens me. Yes, it's important. Yes, we have to make sure people are housed, but at the same time, we need to clean this city up. We need to get the city back on track, and we need to bring business into the community to balance that ratio.
Thank you. Tony, same question. Do you think affordable housing should be a council priority? If so, what would be your approach?
Well, the priority would be, would be, any new project should include affordable housing. And I say that as one that believes that Antioch already has affordable housing. Antioch is a city that, that people come from the South Bay, San Francisco, Oakland, to, to, to buy here because the houses are very affordable. So that's, we want to continue, I want, I would like to continue to have that trend, where folks that want to come here, and actually folks that are renting here in the city of Antioch, that want to buy a home, that can afford to buy one, to keep that median price where it's at. So we are at the lower end of median prices compared to the other cities here in, in East County, Central County, and, and the West County. And any new projects that we look at should continue to keep that median price level affordability. So I'll continue to advocate for that.
Okay, thank you. Tony, you're first on the next question, which is, if Proposition 15 passes and more money is available for education and local government, how would you prioritize spending these dollars?
Well, I do support 15, and I want to make sure that, that money does, does go to our educational system. Being on the classified division of the Personnel Commission for the Antioch Unified School District, I hear that the budget crunches that they have, the layoffs of teachers, the layoff of classified folks, the inability to make sure that we have the resources for, for our students, is, is, is something of a major concern. Even though I believe we have a great system here at the Antioch Unified School District, run by a great superintendent, fine teachers, but they can only do what they can with the resources they have. So any monies that are available through Proposition 15 should be allotted to, to the different various schools here in the districts.
Okay, thank you. Mike, same question. If Proposition 15 passes and more money is available for education and local government, how would you prioritize spending these dollars?
I think we can all agree, education is extremely important to all of us. Having money funneled into our education system is an absolute must. I've actually started reaching out to people, not only on the school board, but that are running for school board, and talking to them about how the city council can work together, make sure that the funding is there, the education is there. I still keep in contact with many of my teachers and talk to them, even though many of them are retired, some of them still go back and teach, about the issues that they're having and the lack of funding. We have to have education in this city that we can be proud of, and funneling money into our educational programs and making sure that these students are taken care of first is an absolute must. So I absolutely support education and actually enhancing education with any funding going that way.
All right, thank you. Next question, Mike, is, you are the first respondent. What are your long-term goals if you're elected? In other words, what would be your five-year plan?
So first thing I think we need to do is, we need to abandon the thought of, let's defund the police department. That's ridiculous. Every day, I'm out talking to people, and every day, no matter what neighborhood I'm in, no matter who I'm talking with, I hear, please do not let them defund the police department. We need more officers. We need trained officers. And I start talking to folks about body cams, just as I've talked to, talked about here, and the community is in support of that. We need to get a handle on what's going on with our homeless encampments. We have become the magnet for East County for homeless in this community, and this is not, this just didn't happen overnight. This has been a long time coming and building and building. That has to stop. We need to get a regional approach to, to resolve this issue or start getting a handle on this issue and have other cities involved as well as the county. There can be not only the police department, code enforcement, other cities in the area. Homeless in this area is a must to resolve.
Okay, thank you. Tony, same question. What are your long-term goals if you're elected? In other words, what would be your five-year plan?
Big, major focus of mine would be job creation. It's important that we have a lot of good skilled workers out here that have to travel miles and miles away just to work, to make a living, just to come back here to a bedroom community. It's, 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 I'm impressed that we have the opportunity to bring in a decent, a decently nation plant. That's going to be put out to bid in, in the near future, hopefully within the next few weeks. That's going to bring in some good temporary skilled labor jobs here to, to local folks here, particularly veterans. And that'll start the trend of bringing in other, other fantastic jobs, particularly in Northern Waterfront, the two job centers that they're, you know, promoting, particularly in Slant Ranch and the Somerville Mall. So these are, these are a priority for me to make sure that, that, you know, we bring the jobs. We need to make sure that we take care of the blighted areas and work with our homeless in the meantime. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Tony, you're first for the next question, which is, please discuss your ideas for the economic development of the city of Antioch.
Well, I kind of stated that just a few seconds ago, that, you know, I support the, what the city staff is, is promoting about bringing in a couple of job centers here for the future. One, I'm very pleased to see, and I want to really want to focus on this one, if they bring this job center to the Somerville Mall area, because that's one of the most blighted and vacant areas that, that we have in, in the entire city of Antioch, including the, you know, the ones in Delta Fair. So those, those issues need to be discussed with our economic developer and, and the team that's working on that. I want to be a part of that. I've, I've worked with some of these property owners and some of the business owners that wanted to come into this city to, to bring in some great jobs, and, and we'll continue to do that. But main thing is, we need to make sure that we clean it up, hold the property owners accountable, and work with our homeless so they have an excellent place to, to be able to stay while, while we're working on these particular areas. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tony. Mike, same question. Please discuss your ideas for the economic development of the city of Antioch.
You know, it seems like every time we have an election, politicians come on and they say the same thing. I'm going to bring jobs, and I'm going to cut taxes. Those are the two buzzwords. But what the residents in this community need first, before we can bring companies in here, they need the city cleaned up. And that is the reality, especially our district. That's the reality of it. I own a business. My opponent's in business, and I respect that. But at the same time, at the same time, most companies don't want to come into this area. In my office, we get calls on a regular basis for people looking to come into the area and, and buy a home or buy commercial. And one of the things I ask them is, where do you want to go? And very commonly, they say, anywhere but Antioch. That's the problem. People don't want to come into this community. They don't want to bring business in here. My wife coined a phrase a couple of years ago, and she said, we need to change this to where it says, anywhere in Antioch. We have a problem with this right now. That needs to be resolved first.
Thank you. Mike, you're still up for the next question. What does it mean to you to have a commitment to diversity and inclusivity? And how would you apply that in your role as a city council member?
It's huge. We have an opportunity in this city. Think about it. Look at the size of our city. We're one of the most diverse, diverse cities in, in the county. Based on our size, based on the, the folks that live here, and being out in the community every day, we see that. But we need to make sure that people feel as though they have a voice. I had suggested six months ago that we bring the police department in and create a forum where people from everywhere in this community, everywhere in the community, have a voice with the police chief through a committee, through a commission, where they can be heard and feel as though they're heard. We need to celebrate that and realize what an opportunity we have here as a community. This isn't like many other communities. I can go to Starbucks or the store and talk to 15, 20 different people, and we all come from different backgrounds and, and we have different lives. That's the beauty of the city of Antioch, and let's capitalize on that.
Thank you. Tony, same question. What does it mean to you to have a commitment to diversity and inclusivity? And how would you apply that in your role as a city council member?
Well, I think it's very important. When I came here as a 13-year-old in 1970, Antioch wasn't very diverse. It was primarily a, a, you know, white community. Throughout the years, you know, I've learned to see a lot of our residents grow into, you know, growing, growing as far as a diverse community. You know, me being of Latino descent, I, we didn't see many of them during the 70s. Now there's, you know, a large portion of Latinos are actually living in our district and throughout the, throughout the city. We have a great African-American community out here that does a lot of good things with the church communities and a lot of things out here. So I think it's important that we all have that voice to, to see what Antioch is all about and to make sure that Antioch is inclusive with every single person here living in this city. So it's important that we promote diversity out here. It's important that we create events and, and community functions as a diverse community, and I think we are, we are there, and we just need to make sure that we continue to do so. So, thank you.
Thank you. Tony, you're still up as the first responder to the next question. Would you consider the most important issue currently facing this council this coming year, and how do you propose to address it?
The most important issue right now, I believe, is homelessness. That's one of the things that this council's been discussing. I know they've been working regionally in the county. I've done it in the past, working with the county and our, and our state elected to, to address the homeless issue. It's a tough issue, you know. We're not the only one that has homeless in our, in our community. Our surrounding cities have that as well, but other cities are doing something about it. Pittsburgh is bringing in a resource of, of an area where people can actually live on a permanent basis out there. Antioch was looking at that. We have a plot of land in the outskirts of Antioch that potentially can be that avenue for, for our homeless population. So I think it's going to be important that we, that we address homeless. It's important that we continue discussion, but we need to make sure we also bring the resources for, for mental health and other things to, to address this issue. It's, it's probably our most important issue in the city of Antioch at this point.
Thank you. Mike, same question. What do you consider the most important issue currently facing this council this coming year, and how do you propose to address it?
Without a doubt, it's homeless situation that we have in this city. And the homeless situation, and I want to be clear that we don't need to turn our back on that situation, because there are people that are true victims. But at the same time, there are areas that are homeless encampments where crime is coming into those neighborhoods. Give you an example. Recently, out on Wilbur, there was an encampment, and there was a state agency that within a two-week period recovered 12 stolen vehicles out of there, a loaded shotgun where an arrest was made, and heroin. Now, this isn't everybody, and I don't want to give that impression, but this is a big problem for our community. This needs to be a regional approach, not just the city of Antioch. We do not need trailers, and we do not need permanent motels at over a million dollars burden to us as taxpayers within this community. We need to address it, but it needs to be done regionally with the county's help.
Thank you. Mike, continuing. Would you consider your most important responsibility as a city council member?
For me, that's very simple. Safety of this community. Safety of the community and the well-being of this community is number-one priority. I've spent my life, 21 years of my life, ensuring that the community that I worked with was safe and worked day and night to make sure that that happened, and tried to do my part. That is the number-one priority, safety. We need to be able to- We need to be able to have our families drive to the store at night and not worry about what's gonna happen to them. Are they gonna be approached by somebody? Are they going to have to walk through an encampment to go inside a store? So we need to work with the entire community, as I've mentioned, with the homeless population, to help start resolving that issue regionally. But safety is number one. It has to be for the residents of this community. If we don't have people that feel safe, they will not buy here, they will not live here, they will not want to be in this community. They have to feel safe in their homes.
Thank you. Tony, same question. What do you consider your most important responsibility as a city council member?
I think the most important responsibility as a coun- as a council member is to make sure that we are available, to communicate, accessible. Anybody that has certain concerns, questions regarding situations in, in our city, uh, we should be able to be there to answer those questions. We also have the responsibility to work with our city staff, which includes our police department, our code enforcement, our, 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 our field workers, the people that work on, on the streets, and make sure that they have all the resources, uh, to do their jobs. And, uh, we, it's important that, uh, you know, we take a, a, a big stake in, 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 in affording them those resources. We've done that in the past. Uh, again, coming from a city council that I was part of, that was, uh, had depleted funds, we have resources now to make sure that we, uh, are able to, to afford all these folks, the, the, the resources they have or need to do their job. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. It is now time for closing statements. Each candidate will now have two minutes to conclude with, to conclude with a closing statement. Tony, you're first.
Yeah, thank you. Again, I want to thank Mike for, for being here and thank you, uh, for having the forum. Uh, it, this is a little bit different situation. Uh, it's hard to prepare when you're doing it in Zoom. It, it's a little bit more, uh, flowing when you're doing it in person. I had the opportunity to, to, to do two of these in, uh, in the past. But, you know, the Antioch being in, in districts now, it, it is, it concerns me. You know, we're supposed to be, uh, you know, leaders for the whole community. And, and I think we'll continue to do that. But when you start dividing, uh, uh, this city into districts, we're gonna start looking at our specific areas. And if you talk to different council members, they're actually focusing on those areas. And that's sad. It's unfortunate. But with that said, it, it is important for us to, uh, to work together as a council. If I'm so afforded to be a council member, uh, and elected as council member, that's my goal and plan is to make sure that this entire city is, uh, is addressed. Uh, but I will, uh, look at my, my specific district and see if we can get those things, uh, done. Now, I've been here for a long time. I, I've, uh, I've been a leader in, in different aspects, uh, not in, not just in government, but from, uh, from a, uh, work, uh, career atmosphere and, and, uh, have major experience in negotiations and, and, uh, working with employees and, and dealing with, uh, the management side or a union side, whatever the case may be. But I've done, I've been able to get things done. And, and that's the plan that I have when I, uh, uh, am or hopefully, uh, elected to, uh, to city council. So I just want to thank everybody, uh, for, um, for, uh, viewing and, uh, look forward to, uh, uh, more conversations. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, your closing statement, please.
Sure. First, I wanted to thank the League of Women Voters for, for hosting this forum. I was concerned that we were not going to, with the COVID situation, be able to get out to the public and actually be heard. Also, I wanted to thank Tony for coming. I, I enjoyed exchanging ideas back and forth. And one of us is gonna win this election. And hopefully, the voters, as this unfolds and we go to the polls here very, very soon, think about the last two, three, five, 10 years. Is the condition of the city of Antioch better today than it was back then? I feel it is not. I feel we have issues that have continued to grow within the community. And we need a change. We need to get Antioch back on track. I'm really very, very proud to have been endorsed by not only the Mercury News, but the Antioch Police Officers Association. And to me, that says that these officers understand that I know the direction that this city needs to head. We have a choice in front of us. And staying status quo or going back to the past is not the answer. We need to move forward. Weeks ago, I posted a five-point plan of what I intend on doing once I'm elected. And that is, number one, supporting the police department and not defunding, and when possible, hiring more officers. Working with and breaking up the homeless encampments, but doing it the right way and creating a regional approach. Capitalizing on the downtown water views. We have a, a resource that is fantastic on the north end of the city, the river. Make code enforcement a priority. I believe they are slipping and it's an issue. And we always, always must continue to embrace the diversity in this city. Thank you, and I would be honored to be city council member, District Two, for the city of Antioch.
Thank you very much. Um, I'd like to thank Mr. Robanica and Mr. Tiscorino, who are running for Antioch City Council, District Two, for participating in this forum. I'd also like to thank the Contra Costa Library, Contra Costa TV, and the Contra Costa Office of Elections, who sponsored, along with the League of Women Voters, this presentation. For further information about candidates, issues, and voting, please refer to cocovote.us, CCC-LIB.org, or votersedge.org. Voters Edge is the League of Women Voters site. All three sites have a wealth of information. And lastly, to all viewers, be sure to vote by November 3rd. Thank you.